All right, good evening. Welcome to the Monday, August 14th, 2017 School Board Meeting. Appreciate your patience. We had a nice little reception for our IB diploma students. We are having some sound difficulty however, but we're going to get started. We're going to try and talk really loudly and we'll see hopefully the TV cameras if we're able to pick up some of the sound as well. So tonight, we're going to start out with our spotlight for our International Baccalaureate Diploma graduates. So I'd like to call Jennifer Magdal. Thank you.
And she's not a student, she's a teacher. Oh, that makes me feel wonderful. Thank you. Thank you Superintendent O'Sai and the board members for allowing me to come in and talk about our wonderful IB diploma candidates today, or recipients now. It's just amazing the things that they've done, so it's fun for me to brag about them a little bit. First of all, I'd like to talk about what the International Baccalaureate Program is, because it's not just a test. A lot of people think that, well, it's just like any honors class, it's just taking a test, and it's not like that at all. I'd like to highlight two things from the IB mission statement that really resound with me and hopefully will with you too. So their mission is to develop inquirying, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help to create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. And they go on to say that they want their students to become active, compassionate, and lifelong learners, who are going to understand that other people with their differences can also be right. And I know that all of our diploma recipients embody that, and they're going to go make this world a much better place. This year, St. Louis Park Junior and Seniors took three, 203 of them took 418 examinations. Yeah, that's pretty par on course for what we have had in previous years. But again, we're talking about the recipients today, and they've gone far beyond just taking a test or two. They've gone through the whole program, which means that they have taken a broad coursework in their literature courses, in a language acquisition course, in history, or individuals and societies, in science, and in mathematics. Most of those courses that they took were two-year courses, so it went through their entire junior and senior year. Most of them did. So that fills up their schedule pretty quickly. And on top of that, they're also completing a course called Theory of Knowledge, which is where they're learning about how we come to the knowledge understandings that we have and the ways that we know things. And it also had to complete an extended essay, which many of them, I'm sure, will tell you, if they pick something that they're passionate about, they're going to end up with a really good essay. And it's a 4,000-word essay that they come in early on Tuesdays and Thursdays to work on. And they got that done in the span of their junior to senior year. They also have to complete requirements making them a well-rounded person in creativity, activity, and service. So they're going beyond their school day, and they're investigating things that are interesting to them. And they're getting skills and helping people in ways that are interesting to them. So these students truly embody the characteristics of the IB learner profile of being principled, caring, and academic risk-takers. This group of eight IB diploma recipients, not all of them are here today, but we had eight, had to score somewhere between one and seven. That's the IB scores, one to seven. They had to have a minimum of 24 points to earn the diploma in six courses. So you can kind of do the math and figure out on average what they needed to do. This year, our average IB diploma recipient earned 32 points, well above the average 24 that's needed. Our high was 39 points. Three of our students earned a total of 5.7, so the highest score that you can earn in five courses. So we had some really high scores. One student earned the bilingual diploma because of attending PSI, so thank you for having PSI in our district so that we could have a bilingual diploma recipient. One student took an additional IB course that didn't even count towards the diploma. It was like, well, I want to take physics too, so I'm going to do that. Let's just do it. I don't have enough courses anyways. And then we had a whole bunch. We had three that were taking, so almost half of them took four higher-level courses as opposed to the three higher-level courses that they're supposed to take. IB recommends three higher-level, three standard-level. We had a whole bunch of overachievers here this year. So again, these students embody the characteristics of being IB thinkers, and I know that they're going to go and make this world a much better place. So, can I start introducing?
Why don't we have them come up? And if they could just speak about maybe something that IB meant to them, and maybe where they're going to school, and recognize their parents who are here? That would be great.
Perfect. Excellent. Yes.
Could they also say something about the extended essays? We were talking a little bit before. This is fascinating, what they did.
It really is.
If they could just say a couple of words about that, I think that'd be cool.
They are well-versed in their extended essay topics. I'm sure they'll be able to try to keep it to a couple of sentences at least. Yes. So, not here, sorry. Reverse alphabetical order. Jesse Schwartz, come on up, please. Woo-hoo.
Hello. My name's Jesse. My parents are here, Wendy and Reuben, over there. In 11 days, I'll be going out to Montreal to attend McGill University, where I'll be studying computer science. And so, what the IB diploma did for me is it really gave me independence, most of the IAs and the extended essay. So my extended essay was about Charles Babbage and his influence on the Industrial Revolution. He made a bunch of things, didn't make a bunch of things, had a bunch of ideas that either did or didn't work out, and in the end, he had a very small effect, but it was really interesting learning about, you know, him and what effect he could have had. Thank you.
Excellent. Yes. Sam Orloff.
Déjà vu, I feel like we did this a few months ago. So, yes, my name's Sam Orloff. My parents and my family are here. Next week, I'll be starting at the University of Pennsylvania, where I think I'm going to study history. And my extended essay was about World War I and in the Middle East specifically, and what the decisions the British made and how those were really impacted by political expediency. And what IB really, what I felt was most valuable about IB was the way in which it really facilitates a really deep dive of the subjects you're studying. And so on the one hand, right, you're studying things in great detail with your teachers in classes, and then there's a lot of opportunities for independent exploration of topics that fascinate you. So, for example, in math, right, you know, I'm not a math guy, I would never have guessed I would have written a math paper, and yet I was able to look at the economic impact of the Super Bowl in Minnesota. That's pretty interesting, right? So I think the value of IB is the way in which it really allows students to, you know, make these classes their own and to take, you know, advantage of the opportunities that are available to them. Thank you.
Freya Olson.
Hi, I'm Freya Olson. I will be going to Carlson next year, and I'm looking at studying physics. My parents are Eric Olson and Sarah Ferguson. And I would like to, I'd like to specifically thank my mom for introducing me to Jane Austin when I was younger, as my extended essay, I know very far away from physics, was about Jane Austin's Northanger Abbey and how it is a satire on the Gothic novel, which was a type of novel in the early 1800s and late 1700s, which is really fun to do. And I really enjoyed the IB program because they gave you, it was really hard and really challenging, but they also gave you a ton of support. Ms. Magdal's door was always open as long as she wasn't teaching a class and able to talk to you, along with all of the other teachers who taught IB. They were always willing to help and really loved what they were teaching and really wanted to help you, which was a really great thing to have with the IB program. It also allowed me to learn more about Spanish and read actual books in Spanish, which was fun. Really interesting. Thank you.
Erin Councilman.
My parents are Robin and Dave Councilman. And in two weeks, I'll be moving into the University of Minnesota Twin Cities, where I'll be studying in the College of Science and Engineering and the University Honors Program for a degree in computer science and possibly a double major in physics. So my extended essay, I did a extended essay in chemistry on the effects of home cooking on the vitamin C contents of Brussels sprouts. So I experimented with different ways of cooking them and tried to see what's the best for preserving the vitamin C. I think what IB gave...
Would you conclude?
Generally, the best solution is to try to avoid using water. So steaming, or like microwave steaming, seems to be the best. What I think I got from IB, I think the big thing of IB is that it teaches us how to think critically in different areas. I'm personally a science person, but I also had to learn how to write papers in English and history, and I think that really helped shape me into someone who can think critically about a lot of things. And I think a lot of that also then comes from the Theory of Knowledge course. And I think all of that together really helped me become a more critically-thinking person, and I think that really helped me become the person I'm proud to be. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dotan Applebaum. My parents, Mark and Yapha, and my brother Kenan are here. In a couple of weeks, I will be going to Wesleyan University in Connecticut, and I'll have two years to study all different things before I have to decide on my major, which is the way I like it. Also, sort of the way I see IB a little bit, the aspect of IB that most impacted me, I think, is the value that IB places on interdisciplinary learning, and the way that every course that we were taking connected to different courses and looked at the way that it affected that math interacted with science, or, you know, all these different connections that you can make. So that also allowed me, when I was taking math, for example, to spend my time writing my internal assessment, to investigate the way that money affects political campaigns, elections, and who wins the elections. So while I was taking math, I was able to be, to also be studying government and political science. So, another way that that has impacted me, well, moving on to my extended essay, I did something a little different for my extended essay. I didn't do it in a topic that I had a class in, I did it in philosophy. The skills I was able to use, I got from my participation in debate, and because of that, I was able to write an extended essay on one of Nietzsche's works, on truth and lies in a non-moral sense, and investigate the way that language is formed and the way that language is subjective and objective, and the nature of those different words that I was just using there. So, yeah.
If we could get all the diploma graduates for a picture, that'd be great. And then, Aston?
Very good.
Yes, where? Do you want us facing you?
Yep, facing me and facing Jenny. Oh, she wants to take one of hers off?
Can I get a couple of you? Two, Neil. Sorry. Okay. Where would you like me? On the side behind you, back there. All right, I'll go first, so everybody can look at me. Then I'll get a step out of the way. One, two, three. One, two, three. I'm done. Everybody else? Sorry.
So, thank you. Before I excuse everyone, I'm going to take a little liberty here to ask you to stay for one second, because we have a very special occasion tonight, which is the first board meeting for our new superintendent. Austin O'Sai is here this evening, and he's, so I'm just going to go through the board agenda, what we're going to do, and if you'd just stay, because then we're going to do the superintendent report. I'm going to jump that ahead of the open forum, just so we have it. So tonight, we have a call to order, approval of the agenda. We have open forum, but we're going to flip that with the superintendent's report. Then we're going to have discussion items. We have a referendum update, so we're going to go through thoroughly what's going to be on in the, our bond referendum coming up. Then we're going to have our Minnesota State High School League Resolution for Membership. We've got our truth and taxation hearing date for next, for, in December. We have first reading of some policies. Then we're going to have our tuition agreement for ISD 287 Alternative Learning Programs. We have a revised resolution approving long-term facility revenue for ISD number 287. And we're going to talk about our school board listening sessions. Then we have our consent agenda, and then on our action agenda, it sounds longer than it is tonight, I think, but we're going to approve our date for the truth and taxation. We're going to approve our Minnesota State High School League Resolution for Membership, the approval of tuition agreement with 287 for our alternative learning programs, the approval of our revised resolution for 287 long-term facilities, approval of proposed school board listening session dates. Then we're going to have communications and transmittals and adjournment. So that was a mouthful. So I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. All right, move by Bruce.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Hearing none, that passes 7-0. We have an agenda for tonight, so I am going to turn it over to Superintendent O'Sai for his superintendent's report. So thank you for the warm welcome form. We're super excited that he joined us. He's very qualified, he's going to be a great leader for a long time for this district. We put a lot of time and effort in being really careful and selecting who we thought best would lead St. Louis Park into their next century, and we're really pleased to have him here, so.
Thank you, Chair Yaros and board members. I can't even begin to say how excited I am, and I really appreciate the leading into the next century piece. I'm excited about that. And, you know, as I think about the report that I prepared tonight, the IB diploma candidates, there was no better way that I could have, you could have set up my report tonight. So Ms. Magdal, IB diploma candidates, and parents of the graduates and candidates, my heart is just warmed and overfilled with joy to know that I'm coming into an organization in which our learners are able to articulate their experience with such depth and with just qualification. So thank you. And one of the things that I recognized in all of your speeches is that, in all of your speeches, you really embodied the core values of the St. Louis Park Public School District. And for the purpose of my superintendent's report tonight, I would like to frame the items within our core values. So, connected to the core value of everyone having the capacity and responsibility to contribute to the well-being of others, tomorrow, we'll have approximately 126 staff members coming together to review data from the 2016-17 school year, and start the planning process and development of our site improvement plans that will lead us closer to our mission outcomes. So, one of the mission outcomes directly that it reflects is all students will achieve the knowledge, skills, passion, and attitudes to meet or exceed rigorous academic standards, which you all have exemplified this evening, without demographically predictable results in order to succeed in their future. Next week, the week of August 21st, we're excited to welcome approximately 25 new teachers and licensed staff to the district. During this week, new staff will be exposed to foundational district training, content-specific training, and they will have an opportunity to collaborate with their colleagues at their site. The following week, the week of August 28th, is, will be the week that all staff will be coming back, and this is probably my most favorite time of year, not because the state fair is right around the corner, right? For many, it's about the state fair, but for me, when new teachers come back, it's really the signal that students will be approaching very rapidly after that, and that just warms my heart, because it's truly another opportunity for us as educators to continue to prepare all students to contribute to society, offer high-quality opportunities for lifelong learning, provide multiple pathways to excellence, challenge all learners to meet high standards, and provide a safe and nurturing environment that engages and energizes the spirit. And for all of you, you know that that's our district mission. And that's the thing about this organization which drew me to St. Louis Park, is that it's a mission-driven organization. And lastly, I would like to close with the core value that's connected through persistent effort in an equitable environment, everyone can achieve their maximum performance. And today, it was just exciting to see 335 of our students who started a fall sport today. And, you know, one of the things that I really appreciated about seeing all of our students here is that they were collaborating and working hard and just having a good time doing something that they enjoy. So that concludes my report, Chair Yaros and board members. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So with that, I will say we are going to have a really good conversation about our referendum, what's going to happen, but I will leave this as an opportunity for those who are here for the IB to depart, so thank you, good luck to our students, congratulations, good work. We move on to open forum. All those here, I do have a list of three, so if anyone else would like to speak in open forum, there's a yellow, there should be some yellow sheets over there, and we will call our first individual, it's Julie Rappaport. Is she here? Nope. Speaking on Health in the Park.
Thank you. I thought I was going to be third. This is very short. I just want to first of all thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and welcome you, new superintendent. And I'm very excited to tell you that SLP Seeds has received a grant from Health in the Park. We are going to be starting our pilot program, working with teens and tweens with a program coming from the University of Minnesota called Cooking Matters. We've already been able to do two sessions of that for adults at the Lennox Community Kitchen. Just to remind you, SLP Seeds was able to gather donations and outfit that whole kitchen, so we are able to be teaching up to a dozen people, which is the capacity. We would like support from the school district and the high school to be able to teach the teen tween class in the unused culinary rooms at this time. And so that is something that we have spoken with Carmel about already, with the student who approached us, saying, can we bring these classes, hopefully aiming them at mostly bird feeder students? And so we wanted to let you know that that's happening and get support from you on that. And then, of course, Jane's going to be speaking in a couple of minutes, and these students, the IB students, are so impressive. One of the things that I've learned working with a number of students through Roots and Shoots and other students as well, is that I see a future of students saying, we don't care who caused the problems, we want to just get out there and clean the world already, and we want to take care of problems that, like hunger, eliminating hunger, and cleaning the water, cleaning the soil. So I hope you'll take to heart what Jane has to say coming up. And that's it, unless you have any questions about the Cooking Matters.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. All right, our next individual is Jane Stevenson.
Hi, thanks Julie for the little introduction. My name is Jane Stevenson. Thank you for your time tonight. I've been working and interning with Julie and St. Louis Park Seeds for a second time this summer, but I've been working more on advocacy and putting together presentations rather than working in the gardens. Before I present opportunities and requests that St. Louis Park Seeds has, I want to share a quick story about how important environmental education and food skills are to the poor school in the nation, which is the Bronx High School. Bronx High School turned a 95% dropout rate to a 95% graduation rate in two years through environmental education and food skills, and these students were the first in their family to graduate, open banking, bank accounts, and to go to college, for many of them. So we hope that our proposal will have a similar impact alongside narrowing the achievement gap, which St. Louis Park Schools have worked diligently towards for the past few years. So with that in mind, what's the opportunity for St. Louis Park to address food security and closing the achievement gap within St. Louis Park schools? And what do we suggest? A task force of cross sectors that will investigate the development of an environmental education center and resource hub with a public greenhouse serving both city and district visions. Studies show the achievement gap can be closed through proper nourishment and connection to nature, and we propose to help solve this problem with a cross-sector food security task force and an innovative community environmental education center. So this proposal has been driven by the petition of over 600 signatures that Julie has here and that you can see the five themes that the petition represents in the handout that both the school board and the city council were presented in April of this year. I gave a similar presentation such as this, actually in this room, last Monday, to city council, and a public presentation was given at the St. Louis Park Library yesterday. The district's involvement in this work would benefit the public and student bodies' education using the environment and green economics as an integrated context for learning, and after the loss of the ParkSci program and the absence of culinary education, environmental and food skills are even more important for our students. So our request for the school board are to become a partner and supporter of a greenhouse environmental resource hub and use it to provide healthy and local food to students and educational opportunities, not to support it, but have it become an integral part of our education. Obviously costs are concerned, yet so is a three-minute time limit, so we would like to schedule a future meeting to discuss this topic in more detail with the city, other stakeholders, and the U of M before September 15th, when the letter of intent to the U of M's Resilient Communities Project is due, and to prepare for the USDA Community Food Project Grant. And then finally, please attend the Harvest Festival that we're planning for August 27th to witness what other cities and districts are doing in terms of community gardens. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions? Is that good? Okay.
Thank you. All right, our next individual is Marty Wetherall.
Hello. My name is Marty Wetherall. I live at 4135 Ottawa Avenue South, right behind Susan Lindgren School. And I have two daughters who are students at Susan Lindgren, one fifth grader and one first grader. I was the lone public forum speaker at the last school board meeting in June, and I'm really honored to be here again tonight. I'm sorry that I didn't get to say anything to the IB students. I was in the first four-year IB class at Southwest High School, which I realize was 30 years ago this fall. Hard to believe, but I can relate to what they were going through. It's really impressive. And I'm really happy to be here tonight at the occasion of your first meeting as superintendent, Mr. O'Sai, welcome. I attended your public interview last May, where I asked you about the ParkSci program, which brings our high school science teachers into elementary schools to inspire our younger students with STEM lessons at a critical stage of their academic development. I also spoke about ParkSci at the last board meeting in June, explaining that sudden news of the program being cut spurred me into action last spring, and I've been at every meeting, interview, listening session, and so forth that I could get to ever since, representing hundreds of parents who deeply appreciate ParkSci and don't want it to go away. And tonight, I'm here again to say that we're still here, still working to develop a sustainability plan for ParkSci that will position it for continued growth and distinction as yet another landmark innovation to come out of St. Louis Park. As I said last time, we're choosing not to treat ParkSci as a grant-based program where the grant has run out, but rather... M's Resilient Communities Project is due, and to prepare for the USDA Community Food Project Grant. And then finally, please attend the Harvest Festival that we're planning for August 27th to witness what other cities and districts are doing in terms of community gardens. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions? Is that good? Okay.
Thank you. All right. Our next individual is Marty Wetherall.
Hello. My name is Marty Wetherall. I live at 4135 Ottawa Avenue South, right behind Susan Lindgren School. And I have two daughters who are students at Susan Lindgren, one fifth grader and one first grader. I was the lone public forum speaker at the last school board meeting in June, and I'm really honored to be here again tonight. Sorry that I didn't get to say anything to the IB students. I was in the first four-year IB class at Southwest High School, which I realize was 30 years ago this fall. Hard to believe, but I can relate to what they were going through. It's really impressive. And I'm really happy to be here tonight at the occasion of your first meeting as superintendent, Mr. Ossai. Welcome. I attended your public interview last May where I asked you about the ParkSci program, which brings our high school science teachers into elementary schools to inspire our younger students with STEM lessons at a critical stage of their academic development. I also spoke about ParkSci at the last board meeting in June, explaining that sudden news of the program being cut spurred me into action last spring, and I've been at every meeting, interview, listening session, and so forth that I could get to ever since, representing hundreds of parents who deeply appreciate ParkSci and don't want it to go away. And tonight, I'm here again to say that we're still here, still working to develop a sustainability plan for ParkSci that will position it for continued growth and distinction as yet another landmark innovation to come out of St. Louis Park. As I said last time, we're choosing not to treat ParkSci as a grant-based program where the grant has run out, but rather, we're recognizing that the original grant led us to discover a truly breakthrough model that's remarkably efficient. Readily available dedicated science teachers engaging kids with age-appropriate lessons before middle school. And that model is creating real value that can be captured and expanded, just like a startup using its early-stage funding to achieve scale, sustainability, and profitability. Before ParkSci, our incoming freshmen weren't prepared for their high school-level STEM courses. And now, after several years of the program, Mr. Miller, who's here tonight, has been able to add engineering classes that wouldn't have been remotely possible, he says, without ParkSci laying a strong foundation at the elementary level. It's strategy number one of the district's strategic plan in dramatic action. And it's no secret that STEM studies have never been more relevant or important than they are today. Think back 15 or 20 years, when most people didn't have cell phones yet. The iPhone just turned 10 years old this year. No one was talking about self-driving cars 10 years ago, and now everyone's wondering what's going to happen to the transportation industry, not to mention every other industry that automation is threatening to reshape, including mine and yours. A recent poll of Minnesota CEOs found that lack of STEM talent was atop their list of biggest fears for the future. They understand that if you're not the one doing the disrupting, then prepare to be disrupted. And STEM is the foundation of that disruption. May I have a minute more? Thank you. Now think ahead to the 2030s. That's just 15 or 20 years away when our elementary kids will be entering the workforce. We have a chance to continue inspiring our kids, and especially kids who are underrepresented in STEM fields today, to explore and enjoy STEM studies through the unique discovery of ParkSci, preparing them for a future we know is coming, even if we can't fully envision it or even imagine it now. Ask any grade schooler in this city to name their favorite, most memorable classroom lessons from the past year or any year so far, and virtually everyone will name a STEM lesson taught by a visiting high school science teacher from the ParkSci program. Try it. Boys, girls, kids of color, all of them. It's amazing, and there's a reason it's unusual. That's why we're still here, with the school year about to start, seeking a budget amendment to extend funding for ParkSci for the 2017-2018 school year, so that we can continue working with the teachers on building a sustainable revenue model that will keep it going and preparing kids for their futures here in St. Louis Park and beyond. But that job will be made much harder if the program is interrupted, and it stands to be without some fast action. We're ready to hammer out a solution, and we're available to meet, to share our full sustainability outlook at your earliest convenience. And lastly, forgive me, because I'm new to this, I don't know what it takes to get a budget amendment approved, but I know that my daughters think ParkSci is done, and they are bummed. But I'm going to show them the great things aren't over until they're over, and comebacks can happen. It's how most of history's greatest breakthroughs came to be, when success looked least likely. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at open forum? Doesn't have a chance. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to our discussion items, which our first item is the referendum update that Sarah Thompson will lead.
Chair Yarosh and board members, I'm excited and honored to introduce our team that will be presenting about our learning design for the future plan this evening. Tonight, I have with me Sarah Thompson, our Communications Director, Tom Bravo, Facilities Manager, and Kathy Wallace, who is with the Cunningham Group. Sarah?
Thank you, Superintendent Ossai and members of the board. We're happy to be here tonight to give you an update on the plans that are moving forward with the referendum. So believe it or not, we're less than 12 weeks away from Election Day, if anybody's counting. And so we wanted to just give you an update on not only how did we get here, but a reminder of how we're heading forward and what we're doing our best to inform voters about before Election Day. So we are having a couple of technical difficulties, so bear with us as we go through here tonight. Hopefully, this will work out for us. So as you remember, we started with a strategic plan back in 2015. It's a five-year plan, and our mission statement actually drives our facilities work. So I'll let you read along, but most important in this is the last line that says, "We will provide a safe and nurturing environment that energizes and enhances the spirit." So this is really the core of the facilities improvements that we're proposing in the school district. Also, in the referendum, we tie to the strategic plan. Strategy four specifically states in facilities that we will ensure that our facilities are consistent with the needs of our learners and our community. That's a very important point, that not only are our schools functioning by day, they are open as community centers during night, during weekends, and during the summer. It's an important distinction. We formed a learning design team that came together and met for the better part of seven months, looking at best practice and research, a broad base of membership, to really decide what should we do with this challenge that faced us, and how do we meet the needs of our strategic plan? They came up with a set of common ground, things that they thought should be in every proposal. So they, as a group, created three proposals that went to the school board, and you, as a school board, had the audacious task, is what I will call it, of trying to pick what in fact should make it through to the referendum. And that's how we got here today. So you picked a package, put together a package that meets the needs of all learners, both in our school day and at night and on the weekends, that totals $100.9 million. It impacts all learners in St. Louis Park, and that means the community as well as those students who are in our early childhood programs, all the way through to our high school graduates. What's most important tonight is to pay attention to tax impact. This is information we didn't have right away in the spring. So the average home in St. Louis Park is valued at $250,000. That's the median price of a St. Louis Park home. And the tax impact for the average homeowner will be $12 a month on the bond referendum. So that's an important number. We will soon have a tax impact calculator up on our website, so that people who have home values that aren't exactly at $250,000 can type in their home value, and the tax impact will appear on the screen. So it's a great tool that's provided by our financial consultants. So why are we facing facility needs? What brought us here today? So let's focus on need for just a moment to realize where we got here. We do have increasing enrollment, ever so slightly. So it's not going like this, up a steep hill, but it is trending up on a higher line. We do need flexible learning spaces to accommodate next century learning. This is flexible spaces. So this isn't traditional teacher at the front of the room, students sitting in desks in rows. We need to be flexible in our learning. Our facilities are aging. The average building is far older than me and many of the people in this room. It's time to do some work to our facilities. Our maintenance staff does a great job. Our facilities are spotless, they're well-maintained, but it's time. We're also looking at technology infrastructure improvements. This is Wi-Fi. This is things like that that you need as you move through your day. And then, as I mentioned before, our schools really are community centers. How do we accommodate after-school, evening, and weekend gathering spaces? I'm going to attempt to show you a video from the superintendent that outlines all of the plans. We were having some technical difficulties earlier, but we're hoping that it will come to be tonight. So one moment, and we'll see what we can do here.
Hello. My name is Aston Ossai, and it is my privilege to serve as the new superintendent in the St. Louis Park Public School District. I'm a proud resident of St. Louis Park. I'm a husband and father of two amazing boys who will graduate from St. Louis Park High School in 2030 and 2034. When I was at school, we sat at desks, arranged in rows with teachers at the front of the room lecturing. Today's classrooms are grounded in collaboration, critical thinking, and problem solving. St. Louis Park Schools have done a masterful job maintaining its facilities, but they're old and not flexible for next century learning. Did you know, this high school was built in 1956, when Elvis Presley entered the U.S. Music Church for the first time with Heartbreak Hotel. This was also the same time that President Eisenhower was re-elected for a second term in office. They do say, everything old becomes new again. It is time for St. Louis Park to invest in our schools, to showcase our award-winning educational programs, promote our performing arts, support our sports and activities, and continue the longstanding tradition of schools as community centers. Take a look at the following video to learn more about the upcoming referendum.
Voters in St. Louis Park will see two school funding requests on the November 7th ballot. Question one is an operating referendum renewal with no tax increase. This funding helps pay for teachers, support staff, supplies, and programs. School funding has not kept pace with inflation or the demands of instruction. This renewal will ensure world-class education continues for all students. Question two is a bond referendum that will improve existing facilities across the district for all students and all residents. Our facilities are old. They've served us well, and they must be improved to meet the needs of our learners. This referendum will provide safety for students and staff by adding secure entrances at all schools, classroom and lab space at the secondary schools, updated facilities and furnishings to serve all students K-12, enhanced technology infrastructure to support next century learning, improved community spaces, and finally, kitchen facilities to make healthy, made-from-scratch meals for all students. How do we meet all of these facility needs? Extensive remodeling and additions throughout the district with a focus on our middle school and high school. Question two would provide $100.9 million in funding to support these changes. The tax impact on an average-valued home would be about $12 per month.
It's a long list. There's truly something for everyone in the proposed improvements. We need these updates. College and career readiness of our students and the lifelong learning of all residents depend upon it. I'm excited about the future of St. Louis Park Public Schools. The proposed operating and bond referendums allow us to continue our mission to provide a safe and nurturing environment that energizes and enhances the spirit. Park pride is alive and well in SLP. It's time to come together to invest in our future. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th. Please vote.
So this is a preview of the entire package and what it will look like for all of our students and all of our community members. So I hope that it gave you a nice picture of what the school district is proposing. We also have a parent and community group that will be working on sharing the message about the referendum, and so you'll be hearing more from them as we head into the back of the school year. At this time, I'd like to turn the mic over to Tom Bravo, our Facilities Manager, and Kathy Wallace from Cunningham Architecture Firm. They're going to walk you step by step through the projects from early childhood all the way through district-wide and Lenox Community Center.
Thank you, Sarah. School board members, Superintendent Ossai, we'd like to share with you what the conceptual drawings that we put together on what the money's going to be spent for as we move forward. So we're going to be looking at, did I go too far?
You did. But that's okay.
Sorry. We're going to be looking at remodeling Park Spanish Immersion School for a new early childhood center, create a new early childhood center with a secured and parking area. But the security is a big thing for us, that we want to make sure that everything is secured in this district. Relocate the district office. Relocate Transition Plus, remodel space for adult options, maintain central clinic, maintain a gymnastics gym, which is used a lot, maintain the swimming pools that we put money in the last couple of years, and update our kitchens. Also, we're going to be looking at the elementary schools, remodel Cedar Manor for Park Spanish Immersion, Peter Hobart Elementary School for, we're going to put a secure entrance in there, because that's one of the last ones we haven't done. We're going to air-condition all the schools at the end of this referendum, update furniture in all elementary schools, and update the kitchens. Middle school, we're going to add, of course, classrooms because of enrollment increase, including science labs, expanding the lunchroom, expanding offices to create a secure entrance. Again, security is a big thing for us, that we want to make sure that our buildings are well-secured. A new performance arts space and orchestra room, renovate media center. We're going to have, we're going to do 10 next-century classrooms. We've done one here, a pilot here, and it seemed to go overwhelming with the students and the teachers. And then update the kitchen. At our high school, we're going to be doing office relocation of the district office again. Relocate former high school offices to become classrooms, a new commons area, a new Lincoln Learning Commons Media Center, renovate the weight and fitness room, renovate locker rooms. We're also going to do 10 more next-century classrooms and build a new centralized kitchen. District-wide at Lenox, we're going to be doing district-wide healthy, made-from-scratch meals for all learners. We're going to add an additional $5 million in a deferred maintenance improvement backbone technology piece. At Lenox, we're going to remodel the entry again for secure and welcoming area. We're going to update all their learning environments to support diverse users, age, cultures, with furniture and remodeling of the space so that it's more comfortable for the group. Remodel spaces to support information gathering, support health and wellness by adding just simple things like picnic tables and bike racks. Upgrade the restrooms. We're going to refresh flooring, terrazzo flooring, as you can see in the high school. In other schools, we started to refresh our terrazzo flooring because that's a big value to these buildings. It brings back the history of what the buildings are all about. And continuing modernization of heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. So, do you want to take that part of it?
So I'm going to navigate this part for you. We have some images for you of what this could look like. So this is an important distinction. Until the referendum is passed, we don't know what the designs will be. We can't pick paint, we can't pick colors, we have no idea what the exteriors of the buildings will look like. But what's challenging is that people have a difficult time in taking these lists that we've just presented to you and envisioning what that could be. And so what we have for you tonight are some concept drawings, some very early artist renderings, if you will, of what this could look like at our schools. By no means should you get attached to, I like the orange, I like the blue, I don't like purple, gee, I wish it was steel instead of glass, any of those things. We will have an exhaustive design process when the referendum passes. And it will include stakeholders from both internal audiences as well as external audiences. But we wanted to put something together that we could share with you as a board and the community to begin to picture what this could look like for St. Louis Park, because it really will change how we look as a school district on the outside. So it's important to look at all those things. So we have for you some flat animations as well as some flyby. So I will cue them up, and then I will let Kathy and Tom provide some explanations for you. Maybe I will. Just have to let the screen catch up with me. We'll navigate. One moment. Why don't you start there? And that's cool.
Okay. So we'll start with, we really want to start with early childhood and move our way up through elementary and middle school, high school. It seems like it started with the high school. So we'll start with the high school. So this is a concept drawing again of what the expansion of the cafeteria and lunchroom area for the high school. What we're looking at, of course, is a two-level type, full glass, two-story, not two-level, but two-story, with bringing in natural light, bringing in all that sunlight for the students as they eat their lunch. Things that we did when we talked to the Cunningham Group is that we wanted to make sure that we utilize what we have there now and just enhance it to make it better for the students. Also, what you don't see is behind where the colored signs are in the background, that's where the new kitchen's going to be. So we will have a brand-new kitchen in back area, area to serve our students here as well as all the other schools. Anything I missed on that one?
No. One thing that we wanted to add is just as your current furniture in the cafeteria allows you to have that used for multiple purposes, small group work, different activities other than at lunchtime, this also would serve the same function. It's connected to the lobby, to the auditorium, so it could be, it can be flexible for pre-function or post-function space. Just see, ah, good. We'll go slow and cautious.
So, this concept rendering is where we're going to be enclosing the space between the circle and the first building that was built. We want to make sure that we, this is the Lincoln Learning, Lincoln Learning Commons Space. Again, this is the area where if you kind of picture where the media center is off with the glass around the circle, it can, the kids can expand to this area and do their study and get together in collaboration to, for homework and other types of events. We made it open again. We have flexible furniture, and we want to kind of bring in what St. Louis Park is all about in their logos and colors. What else, I, does anything?
Again, example of informal learning space that would expand the flexibility that is available in the classrooms.
To the next one. So, this is the middle school, and this is the new performing arts addition. What we want to do on this one is to make sure, again, that people understand that this is the main entrance. We have a two-story glass area, bringing in natural light, again, saving energy, and also having a secure space. So, as you come into this addition of the middle school, you will have to either check in at the middle school office before you go into the school itself, and then all the functions around the performing arts auditorium and things like that. So, it's going to be magnificent, the addition part itself. We've used, again, a lot of glass to try to get more natural light into the school.
And there's an office addition here to expand the capability of the middle school offices to partner with other institutions and also to just meet the needs of the growing student body there. I did better when I was using the down arrow.
This is the middle school performing arts addition. As you can see, it's going to have seating for about 400 to 450 students, area for people to do performance, along with nice big aisles, white hallways, and just acoustics that will just knock your socks off.
The addition also includes space for an orchestra room. They're currently working out of remodeled classroom and deserve a space that has, is specifically designed for music practice.
Our events will be better attended than that.
And this might be a good time to point out, too, is that one of the things that we, during our deliberations and confirm, is that we really found how frequently and booked up our high school auditorium is, and that was really, was kind of an overriding of what we felt, that just the number, the demand on what we have, just what, the supply wasn't enough. And this will really help alleviate that and provide really good opportunities for our students. The elementary school particularly have a place to go, and then obviously the middle school. So, we're really excited about this and knowing how well it's going to be used, how often. And it can also be used for classes, and will be used for classes during the day, too.
Correct. This is the side of Central and right now PSI, where PSI will be leaving, and we'll be moving early childhood to the side of PSI, having its own entryway, secured entry again. Don't worry about the colors, the colors will change. We will have drop-off, and also where parents can park their cars, drop their children off, and then leave, so that they make it to work on time.
And the intent here is that there's a much more direct connection from parking to the doors to the main level of early childhood rather than the current system where you come in, in the basement. And then the, this is the west wing, the east wing of the building would be remodeled for the district office, which is leaving the high school in order to make space for the high school.
Correct.
And deferred maintenance here, too.
Yeah, so we'll be doing a lot of deferred maintenance in this building.
This building was like built back during Woodrow Wilson's presidency, as I recall, and so it needed, we're going to try to save it in length and its.
1930s, yep, you're right. There's a lot of character, this building.
And it's worth, we looked at that closely, too, that that was really, it's an expensive building to operate efficiently, and we're going to get really new, good infrastructure that will allow us to operate that more efficiently. And so, that's, it is one of the costlier items to redo that building, but in comparison to knocking it down and building a new one, I think it's more efficient. We're extending the life span of that building to make it more efficient. So, I think it's really important that the public understand that, and we're going to get really good results from when we renovate, so.
Correct, yeah, that will extend the life of the building.
It's important to me on that building that for our early childhood and family education, our ECFE programs, that the entry into our district should be in a facility that is built for kids, built for the size those kids are, and that's exactly why this remodeling will take place.
Correct.
We'll move out PSI, we'll move them into this situation that we're about to show. But I think it's really important, that building, to maintain it today, costs us $1 million a year just in maintenance. So, to get rid of that, to create, and Tom has assured me, because I want a whole new building. So, the thing is here, by renovating this building, making it green, and then preserving its life, because it's well-built. But the fact is, we can now save a building, build it for the size of the kids, and build it as a facility that people will enjoy bringing their young children to.
Correct.
It's built for them.
Correct, you are correct. So, when PSI moves out of that space, then they'll be going over to what Cedar Manor is right now. Again, we wanted to have an entryway that's more secure, two-type level glass. We're bringing that natural light again to save energy, but also to bring in different products so that we can enhance that building to make it a well PSI space.
And the goal here is to create an entry facade facing Cedar, Cedar Lake Road that reflects on the fact, this is a two-story building, you just can't see the other story because it, it's more of a walkout model. But the remodeling would cover, would refresh the entire building, and the entry would then help reflect that all the way to the street.
Next one.
And that's it.
That's it.
Well, I want the remodel also have to make the building adaptable for K through five, because I think when we had our school Cedar Manor in there, it was, it was older grades. So, there's some other added needs for our younger students that need to be accommodated, too.
Correct.
Middle school or high school?
Middle school. So, now we're going to show you two conceptual flybys, kind of get you an idea of how the additions are going to look, if you were flying over the space, and how much it's going to impact each site of the middle school and the high school. While Sarah's doing that, I do want to kind of, you know, just bring up again, because people ask the question, what does deferred?
Tom, can I just ask you to speak into the mic? I'm having trouble.
I'm sorry. So, while Sarah's doing that, a lot of people are asking, you know, with, asking for additional deferred maintenance money, what is that going to entail? For the last two years, we've been going on the concept of the deferred maintenance is here to support the replacement or repairs to essential building elements as roofs, plumbing, electrical high and low voltage, heating, venting, air conditioning, fire and smoke interior finishes. And all this will prolong, again, when we talked about, prolong the life of a building and to create a safe and secure environment. So, that's what we're going to be using with that extra deferred maintenance money that we're talking about here. It is just to help continue making these buildings more safe and secure and the things that we wouldn't have been doing through the referendum but need to do anyways, because every year we need to make improvements to our buildings. So, with that, I guess we're going to be changing laptops here to get the flybys.
Well, in the meantime, Karen.
And Tom, if you could just explain a little bit, the state of Minnesota MDE, they put a limitation on how much we can do anyway, and there's, we have to file a 10-year plan with MDE on our deferred maintenance. So, this isn't just a problem with our district. Every school system in the state is in the same boat.
Correct. Every district has to supply a 10-year deferred maintenance plan. And with that, I had to break down and share with them every little thing that we're doing, from window replacement to tuck pointing to roof replacement, just because of the fact that they understand that school buildings are old and they need to make sure that they maintain them, because that's the biggest asset in districts, the schools.
And before we go to the flyer, I just want to, Sandy, I was going to ask you a question, too, and that's why, as long as we're talking about detailing things for the state, but what the state doesn't give to us, we could not do the things we're contemplating doing and frankly need to do just by getting the annual funds we get for capital improvements. And so, this really is the only way we could fund any kind of major reconstruction or remodeling or deferred, bigger deferred maintenance projects.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, what we have identified on our 10-year plan exceeds what we would be getting from revenue from the state. And as far as, because we get long-term facility revenue, and that's why we have to do the 10-year plan, but that, the deferred maintenance items exceed that. But we also have operating capital, which a lot of it is taken from technology, textbooks, and other items that are above and beyond what we could do.
Right, those compete for the same funds, so it's not possible where you could save that money annually to help pay for some of these more major projects. I mean, it's not even close.
That's correct. We may have a couple hundred thousand at times, but a lot of times that's eaten up as well. So, operating capital is pretty much taken.
Yes, thank you. So, we're going to show you, again, an animation. This is conceptual of a flyby. So, you can see the yellows are the additions that we're going to be doing as we remodel the middle school.
So, the first yellow addition, the large one, is the Performing Arts Center. The one to the right is the classroom addition. So, here's the performing arts and the entry. Next is the addition to the cafeteria and modifications to the kitchen. That adds the capacity. And here is classroom additions, the two with the white roofs, and then the glass link connecting the two wings of the middle school, so students don't have to go all the way around anymore.
It does include some science classrooms, too. So, there's a high school.
The first yellow addition is the weight room. Second is that link area in the courtyard, and then finally the kitchen and dining commons. And then a new entrance, which would be the visitor entrance into the main office. That's the north face of the dining commons. And then next, with the kitchen next to the loading dock, then a new screen area and entry, visitor entry. And as we come around the corner, you'll see the student entry by the circle where it is now, and both of those will be secured where you enter directly into an office area during the day. On the right, you see the fitness room addition next to the multipurpose room, multipurpose gym.
So, one thing that we want to kind of share with you is both entryways will link together so that now we will have one common area where students can go in and not have to go upstairs or around or down hallways, they're just kind of linked together.
And that middle white triangle, as I'm looking at it, that's the new common area. Learning link expanded outside the media center that you showed us earlier, right?
Correct. So, we're excited about this.
Which is currently, grass, trees, brush.
It's, you name it, it's in there, and we can't maintain it the way it is. So, we're happy to see it get filled in with educational learning space. I think that's it.
So, that's the presentation we have for you tonight and things we wanted to share with you about the plans as they're being developed and as we move towards the referendum. You will see lots of communication, starting with back-to-school. There is an active parent and community group also working on the referendum. You can seek that out for additional information. And we will be back regularly at board meetings with more information as the referendum progresses. But I also wanted to open it up if you had any other questions tonight for us.
Nancy.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. First, kudos to Aston, he has a hidden talent on camera we didn't see in the interview process. And to you, to whoever put the video together, I just thought that was a lovely summary of a very complicated project that we've been talking about and spending hours on. And so, it was nice to see how well it was crystallized. So, thank you for that.
I agree. Aston, you have another job waiting for you. But to the district, that's wonderful. Stay here for a century, that's right. It was wonderful animation and all the great media that you put together for that. That was, that's something to follow up with in the future. That's great. Unfortunately, not everybody on TV land was able to hear it, probably. Is that going to be posted somewhere?
Yep, certainly. We're going to be sharing it with staff as they come back to school to start the school year, and we will be sharing it widely. So, it'll air on our YouTube channel, on Channel 14, on our website, on our Facebook page, and just about any other medium you can think of, as well as, as we're out in the community, sharing the word about the referendum and educating voters, we'll be sharing it far and wide as well.
All right, I should point out, we met a little bit to talk about this beforehand, so a lot of questions were answered before. So, any other questions or comments? All right, thank, yeah, great work. The video seems great. It'll be good to have that on the website. Really informative, and with the financial calculator, people will be able to weigh what the tax impact is for what we're getting for our district and our community. So, thanks so much. Okay. The next item is the, where are we here? Okay, the next discussion item is the Minnesota State High School League Resolution for Membership for 2017-2018. Superintendent Osai will present on this one.
Thank you, Chair Yaros. With the 2017-18 Resolution for Membership in the Minnesota State High School League, what this is asking us to do is renew our membership with the High School League and participate in approved inner-school activities sponsored by the league in its various subdivisions. So, by entering into this agreement or signing the resolution, we're affirming that we have reviewed why we play training video, which defines the purpose of education-based athletics and activity programs, and will assist in school communities communicating and share common language as it relates to the value of these athletic and educational programs.
All right, and I did watch the video last night, although I'd be hard-pressed to identify the differences between this year and last year. So, anyhow, any comments or questions about that? Ken?
Last year, I think we were all required to watch that video. Are we also this year required to watch that video?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's very similar.
And for the folks at home, the video's all about how sports are not about winning, they're about learning and growing and becoming better people.
Yeah, a lot of, if those are familiar, a lot of speak from like the Positive Coaching Alliance. So, it's all really about why they're there and what the coaches' roles are and what they should be, and having the right focus so the kids are having fun, because 99.9% of them will not be playing professional or getting a college scholarship. So, anyhow, any other questions, comments? Okay, that'll come up later on our action agenda. Next item is the truth in taxation for 2017. Sandy, you've already selected a date for us, I think?
Yes, we did. And we have to do this every, by every September 30th of every year, set our dates for our truth in taxation hearing, which we.
I don't know if your microphone's working, is it, or it's not close?
Is it not working?
How about this one? Okay. By September 30th of each year, we have to set our truth in taxation dates so that we can have public participation. And this year, we're going to be setting it for December 11th from 6:30 p.m. here in C-350, and invite all to come.
Okay, let's get that on our calendars. Let's see, usually what, 6:30 on that night? Is that what you, yep, okay. That'll come up later for a vote to approve that date. Next item is policy development, first reading of policies. 417, chemical use and abuse, policy 418, drug-free workplace, drug-free school, 501 weapons, and 502. Policy 418 Drug-Free Workplace Drug-Free School, 501 Weapons, and 502 Search of Student Lockers, Desks, Personal Possessions, and Students, Students Person. So, Cindy has put these together. There are no recommend, recommended changes, recommended by MSBA. We, I believe, are supposed to look at these annually, and it looks like we've been a bit delinquent. So, that is why all these are coming up for review this time. Are there any comments or questions after the first reading? No, I had one. Let me see if I can find it here. I made a note, and I can't... Well, I'll take it offline. I had a note, I can't...
This will come back.
In one of the next couple of meetings for our, our next review, a second reading, so. Alright, anyone else? Okay. Moving on, our next item is the Tuition Agreement for ISD Number 287.
Alternative Learning Programs.
Sandy, you're going to speak to that one?
Yes, this is something that, an agreement that 287 is asking its member school districts to approve at the board level for alternative learning program, with something that was discussed with the superintendents actually last fall. This is above and beyond what we already pay for tuition for alternative learning programs. And it's 1,400 per student, which for our district, based on at least what we had for enrollment in this last year, is going to be about $17,000 extra. But this is being asked, and, and, and that's why it's to the board for approval tonight.
And, your opinion, were you involved in some of those discussions, and setting the price, and what's your feeling about it?
Well, we had a conversation today, Doc, Mr. Aston and I had a conversation today as far as what we may need to have discussed this year as far as alternative learning program, and what is the most feasible solution for us now that this has occurred. This was conversations last fall. Like I said, you know, I had very little involvement with it, but it's, all the superintendents, special ed directors, I think, may have been involved as well. A lot of it was probably informative for us, but it's something that the Independent School District 287 has identified as a cost that they have to incur, that they don't have the funds to, to be able to continue. So there was a conversation, I believe, at that time, of whether to continue the alternative learning program at 287, and it was determined at that time to continue it with this as the option to continue.
So, in previous years, have we've gotten this service? Is that correct? And just this year, there's an extra charge because 287 needs to bill for additional charges? Is that correct?
The cost is just exceeding the programs right now, where they don't have enough money to keep the programs going with the funds that are coming in for the tuition that they've been charging us. So they are asking for this extra $1,400 per pupil unit from each district. And like I said, for us, it's going to be about $17,000. And after, like I said, Aston and I will be talking as far as, you know, is this a feasible solution? This year, we're going to keep it, we would like to keep it as is. But I think we need to take a look at whether it's a feasible solution, or if we need to have discussions.
And we had done that before with the program, where we did with a couple other school districts. Now, there's certainly economies of scale, which is a nice thing about 287, and that's one of the things they bring, but, go ahead.
Well, and this is in specific regard to the ALC or the Alternative Learning Programs, not the special education side of 287. And over the years, we've had a number of students that have not chosen to go to those ALC programs. So it's, it's been hard for us to chase a little bit, because families and students can decide on their own to enroll in those programs. And then we're, we're subject to that. So, it's hard for us, the numbers have ebbed and flowed a bit. But I did want to clarify, it's the, the alternative learning program, and not the students that we refer to them.
Does the, does the state's revenue go with, if they go to that alternative, do they get all of the state's? Dollars go to the program in, in 287? So this is on top of that?
If, if we pay tuition for it, then we get the revenue, and we pay the tuition. But it's, it's the matter of that extra 1,400 that is charged above and beyond what we normally paid as tuition in the past.
So we had done it in the past, but if, if I heard you right, we get their state dollars, which is $7,000, but now we're paying 1,400 back to 287 to run this program, which maybe is more efficient.
Well, plus whatever the tuition is besides that, that we, yeah. And so it, it really is, I mean, I haven't done an analysis as far as what that, if it's break even, or if it's, I, I don't anticipate that we're making money off of it.
Okay. But it's something worth, and, and so I didn't do the math, so how many kids are we talking about?
I mean, at the point that I looked at it, and it was third quarter of last year, because we still have to, are waiting for our fourth quarter, which is the last quarter, and it was almost 13. ADMs, Average Daily Memberships, which is what they determine the revenue on.
Anything else? Okay, thanks. That's going to come up later. Next item is the Revised Resolution Approving Long-Term Facility Revenue for ISD 287. And, Sandy, are you speaking on this one as well?
Yes. And this is actually a revision to the resolution that we brought to the board back in June. We erroneously put the wrong dollar amount on it. We put like 20,000, but really, it's $42,623.23. So it's really put in the right dollar amount. And this is something that we levy for every year. So, it's just revising the resolution to reflect that.
Okay, just a, a correction. And I, you know, on the last one, I, I'm a bit remiss. Nancy, I should have, you know, does this come up at all in the board meeting that they're running, they're just not able to provide the same programming they want to provide at the price? And, and, you know, they're serving a metro-wide, or at least a west metro-wide function, but it's obviously cost, I don't know, has there been much discussed? Nancy is our board rep to 287, so.
Yeah, and they've just struggled, the way the funding works, to, to get enough money from the state and from the districts to make it pay for itself. And so in order to keep it going, they just needed to say, we need more from the districts if you want us to offer this. And so that's where we are this year. And then, you know, we can probably do a little look at who goes, and do we, can we meet their needs here, or can we not, and do we need the program? I think we decided we needed it in the past. And so I think that that's something for the administration to take a look at.
You know, and, and the problem becomes, that becomes self-fulfilling prophecy of going away, because if all of a sudden, other districts, I assume, are doing the same analysis, and then it'll be, next year will be more, if people start pulling out and trying to service it. So I'm wondering if it, some sort of cluster, like we did on the special ed side, where we have the program, it's year man, or, you know, if maybe it just pairs up to get, kind of to scale with students, that maybe that's a route we ought to be looking at, I don't know.
The programs that they offer under this title, they are quite varied, and they're at various places along the metro. There's the south side and north side. And then there's the other program that serves young teenage girls who are pregnant, and they have a place for the student, the babies, to go there, too. So, it's very different groups of students that attend multiple different sites. So it would be hard for us to say we could serve them in one cluster here. Just, just-
Okay.
Thank you, Timmy, that's what I-
Alright. Okay. Uh, next item, School Board Listening Sessions. Just to kind of throw it out there and have a brief discussion on what we might think. I think we should certainly have one before, and at least several weeks before. I was thinking maybe early, mid-October, at least a month before the referendum. And then, I guess I was thinking, one in kind of mid-to-late January, as the budget process is going to be kind of underway. And then certainly one in April, just kind of maybe tentatives. And then, maybe, kind of react then to see how things are going, whether we need to either add one or whatnot. But I was thinking of those three anyhow, and I'll, I'll throw that out there for a little discussion, and then we can have Cindy come back and try to pick some dates and locations, and then we can get them up. Any thoughts about that?
It seems reasonable to me, spread them out a few months apart. And, yeah, like you said, if something pops up, then we can adjust and have a couple extra, or move them in, so.
Yeah, I just want Cindy to be sure that we don't conflict with any of the candidate forums in October.
Yep.
Because I would not want this on the same night as any of those.
Yep. And, so, alright.
If you could pass out a city, maybe we could get some dates and some locations.
And again, for the viewing audience, the listening sessions are an opportunity to have some interactions with a board member and not official board setting. We won't have, we don't have a quorum. And it's just an opportunity to have some dialogue back and forth, which this particular forum doesn't always allow, so, or doesn't allow. Right.
Jim, with the referendum coming up, I, I just, and I hadn't approached this to anybody else, but, but just thinking that maybe we should do one in September also, just to get some early thoughts. Because one meeting in October may simply not be enough. So if we could get some early thoughts, and then do one in September, one in October, that might be one.
At least an opportunity, okay.
People agree?
Okay, so, and maybe we set one up in, in September, see how that's, and, and then maybe we can determine whether October, see how that goes. But why don't we at least put that out there, three or four?
September, October, January?
And maybe one in April, as we get closer to budget time. Alright, that brings us on to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Move.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. I did not, fortunately, we, we don't have any retirements as we head into our school year that I saw. So, any other comments on the consent agenda? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes 7-0, right? Okay. Okay. Alright, uh, next item on the, is the action agenda. It is recommended that the School Board approve the date of December 11th, 2017, as the truth in taxation as presented. Is there a motion?
So.
Moved by Jim Benneke.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes 7-0. Next item is the Minnesota State High School League Resolution for Membership 2017-2018. It is recommended that the School Board approve the MS, MS HSL Resolution for Membership 2017-2018 as presented. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved by Nancy.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes 7-0. Next item is the Approval of Tuition Agreement, ISD Number 287 Alternative Learning Programs. It is recommended that the School Board approve the tuition agreement with ISD Number 287 Alternative Learning Programs as presented. Is there a motion?
So.
Moved by Bruce.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Any comments?
I think it's- I think it's a good move for us to go ahead and stay with it, because, and then we'll see what happens next year. Because it could increase if others jump out or whatever.
Right, that's exactly, maybe we can-
We couldn't afford to do it all here.
Right, let's keep tabs. I assume these are programs we have an interest in continuing or in, in some respects. So, maybe just keep us posted during the year, at least what our thinking is around that, so we can think of that and see what the costs are, so. Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes 7-0. Our next item is the, where was I? Approval of Revised Resolution, ISD Number 287 Long-Term Facilities. It is recommended that the School Board approve the Revised Resolution for ISD Number 287 Long-Term Facilities as presented. Is there a motion?
So.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Any comments? We just heard from Sandy on this one. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes 7-0. Next item is the Approval of Proposed School Board Listening Sessions.
I guess, why don't we take this one off? We kind of got the timeframes, we'll have-
Cindy, try to-
Put some dates together that don't conflict, have a look at the calendar.
And maybe get it on the next board meeting. Any objections to that?
No objections.
Okay, so let's not take formal action on that this evening, which then moves us to Communications and Transmittals. Karen?
Thank you so much, Jim. I really love to celebrate Children First assets and action in our community. And today was great, because Karen Atkinson put on a wonderful barbecue at Oak Hill Park. Aston was one of our grill masters, and did a great job. But I want to point out, asset number eight, uses, youth as resources, because one of the students there, Ryan, he did a good job of taking some pictures for people, and that was great to have him be involved. We also do need to mention, the school board election is coming up November 7th. Five candidates have filed, that is public information. The candidates who have filed are Karen Waters, Ann Casey, Mary Tombeck, Christine Johnson, and Bruce Cantor. There is a withdrawal deadline, if you do not want to be on the ballot, by 5:00 PM on Thursday, August 17th, in the superintendent's office. And then the election is on Tuesday, November 7th.
And the deadline to file is tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow.
Yeah, I think it's tomorrow.
It's Friday, yes.
Yeah. Alright, any other communications and transmittals? Thanks for that, Karen. Ken?
Okay, I have one. I just was given this one tonight. And usually, this is something that Karen would do, but she doesn't know about it yet. So, I'll get the scoop. Children, or, on a first-day program, everybody knows about that, and, day one, thank you. And Sarah Lindenberg and Jenny Magdal are doing a program during the, during the first day of school here at the high school, where they're going to ask every student to, to come up with their, your one thing for the year. So their one thing that you want to have changed, or you want to do for the year. One of the students is going to say, for everyone to learn the, the school song.
Fight song.
Fight song. So, I thought it would be a good idea for us, see, that's where you come in, Karen, wear something for me. So, for us to also come up with our one first. So, and then we'll just kind of, I'll ask you guys about it every time I see you, or whatever. And I'll ask the, you guys can ask the students about their, what's their one thing. And then hopefully, they'll have it throughout the year. So, you've been warned. And then the next meeting, we'll have a little, a little sheet of paper that you can fill out, and then you'll keep that in your wallet, so you can bring it out whenever you see me.
Alright, any others?
Your one thing.
Did, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think, I think this is our last meeting before the first day of school. And so I just wanted to, to let parents know, and often drop their kids off when they're little, and show up and cheer and do wonderful things to make them welcome on the first day. But one of the things I love about this community is it also really welcomes students on the first day of school. I see neighbors waiting and trying to make kids feel safe at the bus stop, and being more careful driving, because they're out and about, and they're, they're, they're getting their school legs back, so to speak. So they may not be as careful as we hope they would be. So we all need to help them be more careful. And, and you're welcome to check the website, see when your local school starts. And about a half an hour before the start time, the buses start to arrive. And it's really quite fun to be at the school and just, you know, making kids feel welcome back to a learning environment. So if you're, if you have any interest, I'd encourage you to join us, because it's a delight.
And we have all sorts of times when you can join in, as schools start as early as 7:05, I think, and as late as 9:05, I believe. So, all sorts of options. Do I dare bring up how folks did on their book, their summer book reading?
Good.
Alright, so I finished mine. I'll say that. I won't put anyone else on the spot. But, that was fun, and I'm glad we do that annually. So.
Jim, I'll say, I finished mine. I was reading D-Day by Stephen Ambrose, which is the history of the Normandy invasion that really helped turn the tide and helped defeat Nazism in World War II, and begin the reclaiming of France. And fascinating book, major, major heroes in our, in our lifetime. I just, the, the courage of those young, relatively young soldiers to really risk all, and many of them lost all. of them lost all, to help make it a better world was, was very moving. I then had the occasion to meet with a client of mine who is a current soldier, as it were, and has set, had done several tours abroad, and, and one of his jobs was sort of defusing bombs, which was a big part of what happened on the beaches in, in Normandy. And it was, I did not anticipate that the reading that book would give me an option of bonding with the client, and it, and it did, because I had a greater appreciation, and you could understand that for the work that he has done. So, reading is good.
And that's the point. Bruce, tell us.
I got waylaid on the book I originally brought up, because what I got hung up reading was H.R. McMaster's book, Dereliction of Duty. And McMaster has spent a lot of time on TV lately, and so, it's been very interesting to watch him on TV. But the book is interesting, because as some of you know, I've been doing a lot of work with veterans and about Vietnam specifically. And Ken Burns is doing a documentary, 18 hours in 10 episodes about Vietnam, and I'm traveling around the state doing discussion groups on that. And McMaster's book, The Dereliction of Duty, refers to the Joint Chiefs of Staff and how they were derelict in not advising the president that that war could not be won. And so, it was, it was, to me, again, being a part of it, it was fascinating, and so, I got waylaid on that one. So, I'll get back to my other books. But it was fascinating, and I do recommend it. McMaster is very bright.
Bruce, let's be clear, you were a part of it, meaning you served our country in the Vietnam War, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. On that upbeat note, let's, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Is that moved?
All right, moved by Ken.
Second.
What, seconded by Joe. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.